Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order.
Back to that guy.
Yeah, thanks. Calling meeting to order. Can I get roll call?
Luke Spence.
Here.
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Jay Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skeggs.
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Council, please vote. Oh yeah, first time. Hey Karen.
I'm an eye on that, but my screen's not moved. I don't know what I did. No. Obviously, it's obvious. Sorry. You're gonna remember to get through this. I think might be set on the wrong input.
I just turned it off. Oh, they are.
Maybe. Thank goodness inside of my earth. We're not friends anymore. Okay. Okay. Right. Taken at once. Yeah, you did. Sure did.
Just thought we might have a short meeting. Yeah.
Like all these signs are like, very funny.
Voice call.
Aye.
Okay. Luke, were you able to vote?
By.
Okay, all right, the agenda's approved. We go. Okay. Approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Please vote.
Oh. Aye. Oh, I thought, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep. That ended with a table.
You can do a voice vote if you want.
Approved. Now it's time for the public forum. I have to aside comments from the public on topics city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. I only have one card, Sue.
Sue Vander Kamp, one, two, three, three H Avenue. And I promise I won't take up a lot of your time because I know you have other things to talk about. And I hope that what I say doesn't offend anybody sitting here. But I'm a longtime resident of Nevada and I think Nevada is a beautiful town. But I think we also have some issues that need to be addressed. And the biggest one I can think of right now is yards. I know we've had a lot of rain, it's hard to keep up with the mowing, we've mowed every four or five days this summer, but there's a lot of places around town that probably haven't mowed all summer. And I know we have city ordinances. Are they being used? That's my question. I know you can't answer. But I, the last I heard, the city ordinance said if, if the, there's a complaint and somebody doesn't mow their lawn like they should, the city can go in and mow it and put a bill inside their water bill for them. So the second one is we have some places in town that are pretty much eyesores. I've made this comment to city officials over the last several years, nothing has been done. And I know we have ordinances concerning those too. So I guess my question is, what is being done? And there's probably a lot of people in town that aren't aware of these ordinances and I think you have some options. You know, you could write a, a letter, put it in the water bill and explain to people what their obligations are as property owners, homeowners, you know, they have maintenance of their yards that is their responsibility. Um, you could put it in our Nevada, write an article and put it there. Or you could put it on Facebook. You know, but I think we need to get the message out to people that they need to take care of their property. If we're looking to attract new people to this town, we need to be attractive to them. And we don't want to scare them away by having a lot of sloppy properties. I've come to a lot of meetings in the last couple of months, it's been very interesting, I've learned a lot. But one of the things is that I can stand up here and talk, or anybody can stand up here and talk, we don't get answers to questions. And like I was saying, there's a lot of ordinances in town that people aren't aware of, so I have a suggestion. And you might want to just, you know, consider it for a while, but at the end of the meeting, set aside five or 10 minutes and take turns every other meeting, a councilperson, the mayor, Jordan. You could all pick a topic and just talk about it. Let it be continuing education for the city, but make some of these things known, talk about projects like the water treatment plant, where do we stand on that? You know, is it done? Are the bills gonna go up? When are they gonna go up? How much are they gonna go up? Talk about other projects that may be on the drawing board such as street repair. I don't know if any of you guys right around town, but there's places in town where I feel like my car is gonna fall apart. We need, and there's nothing being done this summer as far as any replacement, so what's on the, what's on the agenda for the next couple of years? Where are we going to fix our streets? Are we gonna fix our streets? You know, these are things that need to be addressed by you. You know? I learn more going to coffee with the council than I do up here, if you want to know the truth, and I love coffee with the council. So anyway, that's all I have to say, but I hope you think about these things and you, you guys need to be transparent, let us know what's going on, let us know what the plans are for the future. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Anybody else for public forum?
Can I add something on Sue there?
Please.
Sue, thanks for bringing up the mowing of the grass. I have actually several properties in my neighborhood in the last uh, few weeks where I've informed neighbors of that, they've been able to reach out to Ryan and, and, and get that taken care of, so you know, maybe we do need to get that messaging out there better, but thanks for bringing that up, because I, I do think that's something we've had to deal with a lot this summer.
There are people that may struggle getting that done. I'm guessing that there's probably people in town that would love to help rather than just, I know yours.
And we'll discuss it, we'll talk about it.
Seriously, I'm, I know there's people that love to get their stuff out and help out. Rather than just send a bill to a customer that doesn't have, for a citizen that doesn't have the money to do it at first.
Yeah, I'm just calling you. Any other speakers for public comment or for a public forum?
Okay, um, Second Street is pretty bad. They said East Street is not as bad, but Second Street is twice as bad as East Street. And then when you do that, and you could use asphalt where the big eight tire center and east hallways at, you asphalt it, it could have done, could have done sooner. And then use concrete after the next street. About to see the old, I see the old dump place, this is a lot of concrete that's grounded up. So they could use concrete there to, you know, do in Nevada. So because East Street is not near as bad as Second Street. And East Hallway, it's terrible. It needs to be redone as soon as possible.
Thank you. Anybody else? Close the public forum. Moving on to item six. HR Green Work Order for Annual Renewal for GIS Services.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item number seven, approve HR Green Professional Services Agreement Amendment number four for SRF sponsored projects A and B in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item eight, approve HR Green Professional Services Agreement for SRF sponsored project E. Design and Construction Administration in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-five, four thousand dollars by five hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item nine. Change order number one for Oak Park State Trail from Midstate Solution in the amount of fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item ten, Nevada Foundation twenty twenty-six Human Service Funding.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I give you a center on two handouts and the actual stamp here in case folks will stop me. Here this evening wearing my, uh, foundation hat specifically as it relates to administering the Human Services Fund. Uh, to refresh everybody's memory, uh, as part of the budgeting process for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the council allocated thirty-five thousand dollars for funding for eligible nonprofits, uh, in the areas of food, shelter and clothing. This year, we received applications that basically were double the amount of money that we had available, and so uh, special recognition goes to, uh, council representatives, uh, Luke and Henry who served, uh, on the committee as well as Emily, uh, Shaq and Melissa Sly from the foundation, so we had a team of four actually review all the applications, score them individually, and we came together. Uh, and they decided, uh, the recommendation that would be made to the foundation board. Ryan sat in on that process as well. Uh, so the top sheet without the color on it, these are the final recommendations that were presented to the Nevada Foundation Board and approved, and so, um, I again would applaud that group, that was a heavy lift. There's no doubt that these are all very worthwhile, uh, causes, I appreciated the the willingness to try to balance out all of the different needs related to food, shelter and clothing, and so this is again what will be awarding. Uh, I will have the foundation actually invoice Karen, uh, for thirty-five thousand dollars and we will be cutting checks to the organizations for the amounts presented and having them sign, uh, the appropriate, uh, contract documents for those funds. The colorful document that I gave all of you is what I actually end up providing to Karen for the state auditor and uh, it's important there that they know that the funds, a lot of these organizations serve a broader audience than just folks that live within the corporate limits of Nevada, and so uh, we've begun, starting with really fiscal year twenty-four, collecting information from those providers in terms of who they assisted, and so uh, I've provided that, uh, also, we, we determined a couple of years ago that we weren't gonna give funds to an organization until they had accounted for all of the funds they had previously gotten, and so I'm excited to tell you that everybody that we've presented tonight to you is eligible to receive funding, we are completely caught up on our evaluations, the only step left is I need to get those to Karen, so I thought you would appreciate kind of a more global look at what's been going on, this is our fourth year and and again, while I know we all wish we had more funds available, it's also really helpful uh, to have this information with the foundation board is you may or may not know, we're, uh, in the midst of a seasons of giving campaign and really a lot of that is geared towards supporting these causes in the community that support some of these very important organizations, so it helps again, build a case that we need to put more private money to meet some of these needs. I'd welcome any questions, certainly, uh, would encourage Luke or Henry to chime in here with your comments, you've been, you had a chance to read the whole stack of them and we're very much a part of the work to present the final recommendation to the foundation board.
Well, I thank you Brenda for doing the large amount of work, the background checks and everything and legwork, we I think had the easy.
Yeah, no, it's, I, I, I enjoy this, this is an important uh, thing to get behind, but next steps, um, we will again move through the process of requesting the money from the city, getting the contracts assembled, uh, we'll put together a press release, usually includes a comment from the mayor. Uh, we'll get the contract signs and get the checks into their hands to start doing some good things, so that's really where we're at. Thanks again for your support, Council and Man.
Thanks Brenda.
And I want to reiterate that when budget time rolls around, the ask was almost double what we were had to allocate, and I think there's definite, they weren't overstepping their request, so there's definite need for more if we can find it.
Again, motion to approve.
Steve's got a, oh, sorry.
Are the board of directors of Nevada Foundation.
I don't have those names off the top of my head.
No, I don't, I don't either, we'll have to get back to you on it, unless Brenda, do you know names of, uh,
Next official role, I do not vote, so this is one of the reasons I sit out.
I'll have to get back to you.
It's not, it's not an unknown list, I just don't have.
Yeah, we just don't know it off the top of our head.
Have members listed.
Yeah, we'll find out, get back to you. Anybody else?
Do we need approval? I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
And approved. Item eleven. Approved Special Class C Retail Alcohol License for Cloud Wine LLC, Lucky Wife Wine Slushies on Sixth Street, effective September fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-five for Farmers Market.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item twelve, resolution number fifteen, a resolution approving an agreement with global music rights LLC for public music rights.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
For the Christmas music downtown, or is there other times that this is used?
Uh, this is used at the pool, Score Park.
Oh, cool.
Uh, Field House. And I believe we would have to have a separate license if we did downtown.
Basically, any place there's music being played, someone should be getting paid for it is there.
At the pool, I thought it was the radio station playing, is that, do we have to pay for that too?
Really?
Okay, alright.
Do you hear the radio station?
I just parked my car out front and blared it from there and that.
We can go to Sam's Club, pick up one of them.
It's the same reason like Bricktown Bakery when Paula has musicians, she has musicians who play original music, because if they play covers, then she as the venue has to pay the rights for the music.
Interesting.
Like when I DJ weddings, for instance, like the venue is the one that has to pay for the rights, so kinda similar to this.
And that is all, there are multiple agencies we're gonna get. You're gonna keep getting calls for this.
We're, we're hitting three out of four right now.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and it is the video, you have to have it.
Yep.
Either the TV, you want music on TV.
Any other discussion?
And the social media era has made it more easier for them to find you.
Alright. Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Number thirteen, approve revised NSCC rental agreement and proposed rates.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Number fourteen, approve revised rules and regulations and inspection form for NFCC. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item fifteen, recommendation to dissolve chapter twenty-eight.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Please vote.
I was gonna ask, what, what brought this up? To dissolve the board?
I think part of it is, there's two boards and there, there's confusion on who does what and the Nevada Senior Board actually does most everything now.
So it's still a board, it's just.
The other board really doesn't meet, so it's
Okay.
Kind of like double duty and.
Sounds like a good idea to. Aye.
Approved. Item sixteen, approve proposed Nevada Senior Citizens Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item seventeen, approve pool heater repair, Rhonda?
Um, you have pretty much all the information that I have, um, in the action form before you. Um, this would be with a pool that's gonna be on its twenty-six season next year. Um, this would be, uh, we've replaced the original heaters once, this would be the second time to replace those. The environment that these heaters are in are, is very corrosive and, um, Steve Capon from Harvest Heating and Cooling has been instrumental in in keeping the heat, current heaters that we have running, um, over the past two, two years, and we're thankful for that, but they have they have died, they're done, um, we can't steal any more parts, uh, to make certain heaters work, and, um, as a person who knows how important it is to have heated water for our pools, um, and be able to get in and train, I think we'll have more efficient heaters, and I think that they'll, these will honestly work better. So I know it's a lot of money, it's something that, um, we, we wouldn't have heaters next year for our pool season if we don't, don't do this re- repair. Um, and I view it as a repair because he is using most all the equipment, the piping and things of that nature, um, like I said, he has babysat this thing, figured it out how it works and has actually come up with a game plan, uh, to actually help save us some dollars on, on the heaters themselves and is not over. He's not giving us three boilers, he's just doing two because he has calculated out and figured out that we only need two to sustain, um, water temperature. The idea behind the system is that it's gonna catch up quickly and then maintain, which will be a good thing, I think that catch up quickly is gonna be good at the beginning of the season, and when we find, you know, that we have rainfall or cool nights, I think we'll be able to, to get our, our heated water back up where it needs to be more quickly and more efficiently, so, does anybody have any questions? I mean, it's really above my, my head when it comes to a lot of this stuff, but Steve is, is a very intelligent man and, and actually Gene Newsom is the one that hooked us up up with him in the first place, and, uh, so it, it's been really good to have him on board and he's already put up, um, some parts into our current system and those get to stay, so we've already paid for some of this, um, it's just that the, the other parts are, are no longer gonna be usable.
Any questions?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approved. Great. The reports. Chief.
I don't have anything. Unless you have questions.
Marles? Rhonda?
I'm good unless anybody has any questions.
Brenda?
Number four, Mayor.
Dylan?
You can just, it's up to you.
No.
The weather's been cooperating, so we haven't had any floods in our lift station lately. That's a good thing. Regular operation and monitoring and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, lift station, and remote flow basin. The UV disinfection system has been inspected and repaired. An accumulation of solids in the bushings was cleared, allowing proper wiper operation. The digester system has been filled in preparation for startup. BFD systems have been inspected in preparation for startup. Digester startup was initiated but is not complete. PLC and solids processing control room has been replaced and I have submitted the DMR QA forty-five proficiency testing. Any questions?
What does any of that mean?
Or? No. Did anybody else have anything for Dylan?
I'm I'm so used to it's in it's in the packet. Nice.
Thanks, Dylan.
Thanks, Dylan. Amanda?
I didn't put it in the packet, but I do want to just come up and touch on some of the and brag really about the increase in our program over the summer. One of the things that you can see in the packet is that the number of people who signed up back in twenty-twenty-two was in that two to three hundred range. And we are quickly approaching the five hundred range for people who are signed up. So you know, making that Assistant Youth Services Librarian full-time position when you did was definitely to our advantage. And 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 for the public, we couldn't do this without the donations of the various businesses who give us give the the kids the free certificates for ice cream and cookies and the donuts. But the and so it's it's amazing to see that how strong of a commitment that our community has to the youth and ensuring that they don't fall three months behind during the summer and the summer slide, as we call it. Obviously, checkout's always increased during the summer with our youth because we have them constantly coming in the library. So that means just lots of extra work. And we've got some new volunteers helping us doing some extra shelving, which is also we appreciate the volunteers that want to help out the library. This summer, we had seven over seventy-five hundred items were checked out just to our youth. And that's really like two months. That's June and July because we don't count August. So our summer is about eight weeks. So thirty-six community partners is what it took to come up with the prizes. And we did run out. So none of them went to waste. We kind of had to at the last minute, look for some additional prizes so we could, as they keep coming in with their reading sheets completed several days after the the end of July. So but that's exciting. So and you just always thank you for the support that you guys show the library with your funding and with your attendance and just coming into the library. If you guys didn't have an opportunity to see the the final foam party this year, that was that was a fun ex fun experiment. Good washing with some rain a few days later. We had some bubbles, so our streets got cleaned. Again, just thank you for your support and just kudos to our our whole team.
Thank you. Jordan?
Tier one of our environmental review for the facade program has been completed. And so they will start on tier two, which is the historical side of things within the next week or so. We had our bi-weekly meeting for both SRF projects. Due to all of the rain, they are pretty close to being finished, but the the deadline is actually the end of this week, so we will probably expect to see an extension for both project A and project B. Project A has about four hundred feet left of their project. That is the one that is directly around Billy Sunday Field. And then project B is the one that is over by. It's right off of Lincoln Highway on that trailhead where where it crosses up. We had our Burke meeting. We actually had two last week, one on Monday and Friday. And then we also had our SRF meeting pertaining to some questions that Burke had. And so we're supposed to be hearing back from them tomorrow on on some things. And I think what we all discussed and agreed was to have everything on the next council meeting in September. Some other things, we had Lincoln Highway Days. Had an IMU board meeting, NEDC exec. We had our mix and mingle at City Hall on the thirteenth. And yeah, also have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We have any update on the Sampson Drive backups at all?
I've received two of the insurance claims. And I think there was five total, so I'm waiting on three others. I do expect them to be turning them in, but I know some of them were waiting on getting certain things cleaned and priced out from the the damages that they received. So once I receive all five of them, I will send that over to Melissa and get that submitted. But yeah, I've received two of the five then.
You know the timeline from when you turn it in till when they might hear something is their guess on that at all?
I don't know. Hopefully not very long, a week or two. Melissa's usually pretty fast with getting that taken care of. ICAP's usually pretty fast at getting getting that resolved as well.
About the Mr. Upton's tree, we heard his construct.
So I talked to Construct this morning about that. They got a denial letter from their insurance company. I talked to with Cory to ask if they would be willing to split the cost with the city on it. Doug, the owner, is out of town this week. He'll be back on Monday and he will talk to Doug about that as well.
Okay.
We need to spend.
And Jordan and I talked via email about this a little bit. So when we look at projects like this, is I was asking about like, does engineering, when we're looking at the whole project, does engineering look at a tree that's close to the right of way and maybe affected or not? And does that come into play at all? And does it sound like that does or has in the past?
It hasn't in the past. Some of the ones that are directly in the way that we've removed those, but we've had some of the projects that we have removed them, we've gotten a lot of pushback. I think Eighth Street, Your Street was one of them, was our the big pushback because we took out a lot of trees. But we widened that whole entire road, so it was kind of necessary for.
I don't know if that's something we want to look at in the future to make sure those considerations are made. Have a arborist or somebody, I don't know, that might know more if the tree's too close or not. I don't know. But.
Yeah, it's a good good idea.
We see it in every community. Everyone wants their trees.
Well, nobody knows what's below where the roots are until you dig them up, but.
Yeah, it's really hard. It's kind of a you kind of can't win. You can design around and and then they can still.
And not, yeah, I know country landscapes, they have arborists on staff, so we could probably reach out to them and they would probably come and let us know what they what their opinion is on it.
Looks too close for a certain species or something.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, nothing from me tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I want to go ahead.
I've got a compliment Lincoln Highway Days Committee, the rodeo folks, the the truck tractor pull, all that stuff. I thought everything this weekend was a lot of fun and was able to enjoy a lot of it as a consumer rather than as a volunteer, which is kind of a different experience sometimes, but Luke, was that what you were gonna say?
No, but I but I agree with all that.
I I showed Jason my note that said Sampson Drive and Upton's Tree, so.
I didn't even walk over there. I didn't even.
So I was gonna I was gonna talk.
My screen is actually showing everything that's right in front of me.
I guess I back that up. The scouts like the jelly guns.
Yeah, I heard that was fun, yeah.
Luke, I wanted to just remind everybody Coffee with the Council is again the second first week of September, which is not this coming weekend, but the next weekend, September sixth, will be Henry and Steve, as long as your schedules work, sounds like they might be wanting to start a little earlier that day than nine AM, but they'll work together and talk with Marla if the changes from the normal nine AM. That is for a football game preparation.
Henry, anything? Steve?
I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that helped with Lincoln Highway Days. That's not a small task from the community. A lot of people do step up and help out. It's it's a lot of work. I put in a lot of hours and walked a lot of miles that night for that day. And couldn't even think about going to the rodeo, but I heard it was awesome. My daughter went. She said it was a great time. Yeah, without all the volunteers and the people that helped organize it, it just wouldn't be what it is. And I think it keeps getting better and better each year. Keep looking forward and next.
I skipped our city engineer.
Yeah, Jordan wanted me to comment real quick again on smoke testing. I know we talked about it two weeks ago. So I won't go into the same amount of detail, but we're scheduled for September twenty-second. And the big thing is everybody should dump a gallon of water down their floor drain or any other drain in their house that they don't use that often. So otherwise, if your floor drain's dry, then you're gonna get smoke that comes up through your basement floor drain. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I know Marla's gonna be putting something in the R Nevada next month, and then we'll be pushing some messages out through social media to keep people informed. I did have like a little sidewalk talk about it at the Lincoln Highway Days Parade with three of the families from Sampson Drive. So kind of letting them know that just because the rain stopped, we're didn't stop thinking about them. So but anybody have any questions about that? All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.